Especially undergraduate program. For example, American college has introduced in the economics department and which is open to other students of their college. And American college also introduced some few chapters, I think, in one of the subjects in the year, a master's program of economics. Then Metas Christian College has introduced Chinese Studies program under the Political Science Department, Dr. Osik, he has introduced that. And in Stella Morris College, they have introduced a course on Chinese Studies, Ms. Geraldine. Geraldine, it's in under International Relations Department. Then two affiliated colleges, one is Union Christian College from Alluva, that they have introduced a course under add-on courses system, which is Understanding China Through Literature. It's basically a literature course, but Chinese literature course. And they want to introduce, they introduced already, of course, one, one batch, they already got their diplomas. A certificate course on Understanding China Through Literature. And now this year, they want to introduce a Chinese language certificate course in Union Christian College. Then another two colleges, they are preparing, they will introduce in the next academic year, that is two thousand nineteen twenty. One is Selassie College from Siliguri, North East to part, and the other one is Holy Cross College from Agartala. These two colleges are not autonomous colleges, they are affiliated colleges. And therefore, they cannot introduce any course officially in their curriculum, but they can always introduce a certificate course under add-on scheme. And Holy Cross College is very much interested in introducing a course on Chinese Studies under the add-on scheme for which they are preparing their curriculum. And they are expecting Dr. Alka's expertise to give them some more coaching to develop that curriculum. And Siliguri, Dr. Bijou, of course, he, and another struggle which we had was another challenge. One challenge was that autonomous affiliate, and another challenge which we found was that not all the faculties had studied. Well, even if they have studied political science or international relations, not which concentrated on the Chinese studies, unless they have studied in JNU or Delhi University. This is what we have found in our training program. If they had their degrees from other universities, they would have done nothing on the Chinese studies. So that was one of the challenges and few, of course, few among the participants were from Delhi Universities and JNU like Dr. Bijou from Selassie. So they are going forward. So fourteen members came, but only five are able to introduce that mainly because that they do not have the capacity. The faculty have not studied even a course on Chinese studies and therefore they hesitated to introduce something for the students. So we, along with Christ University, probably that we also discussed with Dr. Subkanta, that we will be developing something for building capacities in the colleges to introduce Chinese studies. Because one of the things which we are convinced is that as part of our vision, we, we focus on the whole person education, that it is mandatory for all the students to have understanding of, the right understanding of China. I never studied, I am from philosophical background, philosophy, I studied philosophy, I worked as a professor in philosophy for twenty-five years before I joined United Board. When I participated in this program and my interaction with Dr. Alka and others, I had a new understanding of China. Though I work with Chinese people, no, as my colleagues in Hong Kong, most of them are Chinese, except me, almost all of them are Chinese. But though I work with them, I, I work with Chinese company, organization, but yet my understanding on China was very, very different. But when we had this kind of training program, that, that was an eye-opener, that we understood China in a different way. And therefore, the right understanding of China for the young people is very, very important. Because in India, that we have lot of young people and these young people, either they do not have any idea of China, any understanding of China, or they have very wrong understanding of China. So that's our objective is to introduce something basic for the undergraduate students. So that one day that all the colleges may offer something in interdisciplinary level for them to understand China in a better way. So that's our objective and as on now, five colleges have already initiated and two colleges are planning to introduce next year. And we also plan to have next year another program in which we want to invite these already seven colleges, we want to invite seven people. And we need to invite thirteen more people from other, other areas, probably from this crowd and then we will have a in a kind of deeper level of training for the faculty so that they become confident. Because now there are people who have committed to introduce Chinese Studies program. There are institutions which have already expressed their commitment to introduce Chinese Studies program. For example, Christ University, Christ University has, last time when we had the program, they immediately came forward to recruit a professor on Chinese Studies, because they want to establish a center here. So these are the commitments which we have, but the challenge for us is that there's no resource. They do not have proper resources. So one of the focuses will be in the future that we'll focus on the capacity building of the institutions. We will try to develop the faculty, faculty development is very important because unless the faculty become confident and they will not be able to introduce anything new to their students. And therefore, that will be our focus in the next year. And if Cindy wants to add anything more on that, maybe she can add. Okay, 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 thank you. This is what we have done so far. And five colleges have already introduced and two colleges are preparing to introduce next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Spurgeon talked about the role of United Board in the dissemination and support to China Studies in India, gave us with encouraging information that there are many, many institutions, colleges, universities which have introduced China Studies and we hope that this work will continue. So thanks for your presentation. We are now turn to Dr. Ravi Prasad Narayana, who is an Associate Professor at the Center for Peace Station Studies in JNU.
Good morning, everyone. I thank Christ University, National Institute of Advanced Studies and the Institute of Chinese Studies for having organized this conference, the eleventh in its nature, and the issues that are being discussed. My brief talk will be more in trying to stimulate our collective gray cells. Because people come across this word dilemma. To me, China is a trilemma. Lemma, the history of the word says it's from Latin and lemma stands for issue, concern, problem, etc., etc. Why is China a trilemma? To me, it's at three levels, at the level of politics, at the level of economics and also strategy. Now, whatever I'm going to say is, as I said, to try to encourage our gray cells to think about issues, topics, themes, adding more lemmas, if there's a quadrillemma, let it be. Let me come to politics as the first lemma. We are proudly the largest democracy in the world. And our northern neighbor is the world's largest socialist country. I would say entity rather. And we have a system where we have regular electoral mandates. At the state level, since two thousand five, the Communist Party of China has been saying that China is a multi-party system. Why? Because in two thousand five, the National People's Congress passed a bill by Chinese standards which said that China is a multi-party state. Where all the other parties, including the Kuomintang, they subscribe to the overwhelming superiority and leadership of the Communist Party of China. That is a new interpretation to multi-party or multi-partiness, Chinese style. Then comes the question of what is our democracy and its foreign policy doing with China? Now here, what I notice is that in China, there is a personality-centric leadership. Where everything emerges from maybe Xi Jinping these days. But he's smart enough not to write anything down like, unlike Atang Xiaoping. And in our country, we have electoral politics, but which is drifting the direction of personality-centric politics as we can notice in a foreign policy where I know there are retired ambassadors here, but I'm sorry, sir, ambassadors, but isn't foreign policy more than photo opportunities and gifting half jackets and all those things? So more than that, the second aspect is that how do we look at our two systems beyond the personalities and the processes involved? And where is our foreign policy? Why is it in stasis? Economics, the second dilemma. Bilateral trade to me between China and India is very disappointing. If the two countries show some sagacity, some kind of jettisoning of the past, can't we be the original and only G2? We can, but we may not. And this also calls for institutional flexibility. Because in very many ways, the institutions in both the countries are rigid, sometimes even more rigid than the personality-centric temperament of their respective leaders. Why do I say this? It may be, maybe a bit off the record, a bit off the mark. We have no response to the one belt, one road, the Silk Road Initiative, maritime and otherwise. The New Development Bank thankfully is headed by an Indian, Mr. K V Kamath. But apart from that, I don't think New Development Bank has any initiatives in India. If they are, if they have, great. So the thing is, for those who are trying to work on China, looking at China's investment flows is very important from a researcher's point of view and also from a policy point of view for us. Because China is a surplus of resources, reserves, which is translating, translating in every direction. And this has attracted the attention of the US government of now, which is why huge sanctions have been imposed. And the Chinese are hoping that the current occupant of the White House lasts only one term. So that then the Americans will have to kowtow when they negotiate with the Chinese. This leads me to a very controversial question. When we don't have any response to one road, one belt and maritime Silk Road Initiative, where is the SARC in all this, the South Asian Association of Regional Corporation? Is it just a talking shop or is it being held hostage to the fantastic bilateral relations we have with Islamabad? Can we call it a failure or allowed to fail? Now, this could also be an issue as to why has India not been able to create multilateral institutions? Non-alien movement did succeed for a time, but after the end of the Cold War, the NAM is an anachronism of sorts. And of course, the current government would, would want nothing to do with the non-alien movement because one of its founders was, well, the University of America. The question of strategic comes in as a third dilemma. Controversially, I'd like to put forward this question. Do we have a foreign policy? I'm sorry, retired ambassadors. I say this because last five years, I've noticed that bilateral relations have suffered mostly with our neighbors. Internocean region, Sri Lanka, Maldives, Mauritius. These are countries with whom our relations are pretty tenuous, although Maldives did have an election which brought back the old dispensation. Sri Lanka, we know the crisis they're going through. Nepal, Bhutan, Myanmar, Bangladesh, Afghanistan. Pakistan, of course, a unique case. I say this because for those of us who are scholars, especially students, Christ University, your library, I gather, is wonderful. Please trace down the book written by Paul Huth, nineteen ninety-six. And the book is titled Standing Your Ground. It basically argues that democracies find it difficult, difficult, not impossible, to settle boundary disputes. The case study he has is that of Japan. Japan and India are two outstanding democracies in Asia, uninterrupted democracies in India's case, in Japan's case, well. But whatever, these are the two countries who have outstanding territorial disputes, in Japan's case maritime territorial disputes. In our case, both maritime as also territorial, continental, with all of our neighbors.
PhD visit was, did not have enough field trip. It was mostly on interviews, done over emails in conferences and on the primary databases that I had used. Now, one trend and that can be treated as a matter of concern, that the same bunch of people are writing on diverse issues all the time. While it's not a bad thing, but then there's a tendency to go after established names to, like to hunt after them when certain events occur. Maybe a Chinese satellite launch, maybe a environmental concern, maybe a white paper coming from China or a crackdown in some minority region. So I mean, this trend I observed in the database that came across to me. We have to ponder how do you encourage new people to write and how do you create opportunities and and give spaces for new ideas to emerge, especially for the field to diversify and grow. Now, some of the new trends that are being, of research on these fields are to understand policy frameworks, the bottlenecks, the priorities that are there in China and the successes and failure case studies that are there. And it's very encouraging actually because this actually means a lot of, a lot of these can be used for learning from China. The phrase that we have used quite often over the past ten to fifteen years actually. I mean, we can help guide this research towards that, especially to understand what can be replicated, what should be and what should be completely avoided as well. A lot of work is happening on inter-provincial comparisons, especially on development priorities, income inequality, poverty and minority provinces also. A province-to-center dialogue and bargaining in China is another field of topics that I noticed in terms of PhDs being registered. And intra-provincial research, including again in minority research, intra-provincial differences, border regions and interlands in Tibet, in Xinjiang. Although at its primary, at its basic stage, but that is emerging from the database that I looked through. Now, coming to what else can be done actually. What new areas can be included in the new areas that already listed here? One thing that can be looked at from China is are the steps towards the industry academia think tanks integration and how that is in public sector is expanding the scope of accountability in China. Is a new field of research that can be undertaken. Positive and negative aspect of science and technology can be studied usefully. Access to information is coming obviously with surveillance and there's obviously a control and monitoring of what one searches. And especially with the coming in of the new social credit system, it is going to have a huge implication on, on reforms, on protests and on the way people interact with the party and with the state, that can be one field of research for the future. The interoperability of variables, stability, minority, food habits and cultural diversity. For example, the debate on, 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 on the halal food in Xinjiang, on pork, restaurants serving pork or not serving pork or on whales and beards in Xinjiang. I mean, this is a new kind of field to look at. Now archival research in Chinese studies from India also is an important opportunity. And while I was in ICWA, we had started a bit of work on that and I know that there's a session on that in the conference. But I'm not actually trained in archival research, but we followed that through by having read what was written previously on the base of declassified archives. Now, the declassified ME archives in the national archives actually is a huge source on China waiting to be explored. Although not many, most, many of the China files are declassified. But when me and my colleague from ICWA, we are working on, on a topic, we found that a lot of declassified dispatches from Southeast Asia were actually on China, were actually on India-China relations. And a lot, because a lot of information came to India on China from Southeast Asia. And that is one significant source of work that is there to be explored from nineteen fifty's and to nineteen seventy's. And I'll, I'll give you one very interesting example. Now, I saw one communication where one young diplomat's wife, I think somewhere in late nineteen fifty's, had to go back to India to give her MA examination. And we are talking of the era when travel budgets were limited and the dollar exchange was also controlled, the purses were limited. I mean, why I find this fascinating is this also gives us to access on the, on the constraints and opportunities and the evolution of bureaucratic practices of Indian foreign policy actually. This also tells us a lot actually that one had to write back six communications for one flight ticket in the nineteen fifty's to be able to travel. That tells us a lot about the evolution of the infrastructure of foreign policy also. Now I'll come to the second part of my presentation actually, on what needs to change. Now, there have been two beautiful sets of work on that, one of course by Professor Thampi in two thousand six on her recommendations on workshop on review of China Studies in India. And second was Tansin Sin's article in the EPW in twenty thirteen. Now, Professor Tansin Sin looked at three issues that are key to expanding Chinese studies in India. And I think we have, while we have moved on from that, now his, his article was a response to Non-Alignment 2.0 and absence of China Studies scholars on that or absence of recommendations on China Studies in that NAM 2.0 report. Now, the recommendations that he had given had to do with, on how to expand China Studies in India and how to sustain good work is, is, is on the basis of three points. One is infrastructure, which includes of course financial support from government and private sectors. And that again draws to the point I started with, that research is being done without field trips. Now, where is the grant coming? Where are the expansion of language labs, the textbooks, etc.? The curriculum actually, are we refining Chinese Studies curriculum again and again? And the most critical actually employment opportunities for Chinese Studies. I mean, from this, I draw my next point actually, some critical questions that are in my mind on this field. Is China Studies an attractive field today in terms of employment opportunities? That needs a critical reflection. When I joined Mfield in Chinese Studies, the first two preferences was IR theory and Chinese Studies. And then the UPC mandate would go to Southeast Asia Studies and West Asia Studies because the workload there was relatively less actually. So only the keen people did join China Studies and they will, that trend will continue to be so. But the act of mentoring and encouraging people to stay in Chinese Studies seems to be lacking somewhat. Is the field retaining enough talent and how do you bring back people to Chinese Studies who have gone on to teaching in and doing into services for example, or how do you encourage them to continue with their research? I mean, good folks will join continuously, but the motivation will always come from the success stories that they see from their field of the previous generations actually. Do we, my next point is do we need an independent research methodology for Chinese Studies and also from an Indian perspective? Now, you can go without a conference or a publication or a book also, but you cannot do anything in any field without a sound of methodology course in your masters and in your undergrad actually. I mean, we cannot, you cannot stress that enough. Also as a teacher now, I see that struggle actually from the other side. So that's why even more methodology courses are better than less. So I can stress that once again. And also pushing your students to write, keep, having the students ready to publish when they go into the industry, into the field actually. Because learning on job is easy, but it takes a lot of time actually. And there's also a gap between what the way academia thinks and the way think tanks think on issues. So while academia is very positivist on China, the think tanks have a critical eye and the students struggle. I mean, having gone through that stage, I can tell you that students struggle at this point. So bridging of that gap faster is important. Now, we all know that there's a gap between language studies and IR and, and IR and field studies. And I'm going to be slightly more candid in this. So language experts increasingly, increasingly speak on IR and policy issues. While, I mean, I'm not seeking for, and for example, I mean, you can pick up a text on, written on BRI today from India. And you can distinguish whether it's written by a person trained in language studies, IR studies, a former diplomat, just by looking at the first and last paragraph. You don't even have to read through the text. You can hide a name and you can tell who has written that. Now, I'm not recommending homogeneity of perspectives across the country. That is far more dangerous than being, than the, I mean, diversity or one-sided perspectives. But just as IR scholars need language training, language scholars also need a training on IR and social science issues. And I'm, I have added this point after having seen a language faculty's comment on China satellite launch for example. Now, we must also be candid and say sometimes that I don't know on this issue or I will not speak on this issue. That's a self-reflection that all of us can undertake actually as we, I mean, that's only going to help our field of study to encourage each other. The assumption that think tanks carry a certain point of view is also dangerous actually. So there are sign-up optimists and there are sign-up pessimists for example. And then the assumption that if you came from a certain institute, you are bound to be sign-up optimist or sign-up pessimist is also a challenge to me. So getting over the stereotypes is also important. Now, the next point is on the, actually, what has been happening in the last few years, few years is the, is the neglect of some of the established think tanks and the gap of knowledge actually. And accessibility to information is also a huge issue. What I have generally seen is that the knowledge that someone working in think tank has is usually four to six months delayed from what the government knows. And how do we bridge that gap faster is also important. Making institutions talk to each other and sit together is also important. Now, I'll draw one example from the India Shana Think Tank Forum, the second one, in which, which Ambassador Suri led actually. So we're about twenty of us sitting together from MEA, JNU, CII, ICWA, ICS, ICRIR and DU. We brainstormed about four or five times before we went to China and we saw how useful was that actually end of the day. And we, the exercise was actually refining the presentations and helping each other's work actually. Now, data and interaction on data. Now, for example, the trade import restrictions on issues like, for example, pharmaceutical. We didn't have enough sound work on that done from a multi-sectoral perspective, including trade policy, domestic economy, India's export readiness and the pharma perspective on what can be achieved faster. And we also know that a lot of medicine transport happens between India and China by people who come to India as travelers actually. How much that affects our economy and how much that adds up or does not is also an was also not adequately studied at that point. That is also something that can be done. I'll also draw one more example and I'll, I'll stop after that. In twenty twelve, we saw that Indian feed grain exports to China were suddenly halted. And most of us, the, the quick commentary on was that, that China is doing this to increase the trade imbalance actually. But there was more to the detail in that, that many skipped actually. The Administration for Quality Supervision Inspection Quarantine in China was actually being pulled up at that point of time because of the many food scandals that were happening in China and also the food, some of the food exports from China. And the, and IQ was being pushed to be euro-compliant at that point of time. And Indian feed grains were being seen as part of the problem actually, and that's why it was stopped suddenly. And I learned of this from a friend who worked in a data center with the CII, that the Indian feed grain export was not actually up to mark and even it's, even now it's not certainly getting there, although gradual changes are happening. But this side, we got to know only after full four years of, of the trade was halted. So I think there's a lot to learn by talking to each other more and expanding the field of interaction. That is how only will help China Studies. I conclude by saying here that what I have tried to do here is to look at the glass half-empty actually. And as long as we all collectively think that it's also possible and desirable to fill it up, my work here would be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Avinash. You rightly pointed out that there are vast areas in China Studies on which people can work. It's not just foreign policy. I remember in the last century, seventies, eighties and nineties, most people who were in China Studies worked on China's relations with India or with one of the suburb who were in China Studies worked on China's relations with India or with, uh, one of the superpowers, United States, Soviet Union, uh, and things like that. But of course now, uh, you know, that.
Uh, had this idea, uh, on to kick off proceedings for the eleventh edition. Uh, and the issues which were given to me was on, uh, politics, economy and human development. And so I, a lot of things which I say will also have overlapped with what Avinash said. Uh, and for a long time in China conferences, I have had the opportunity to sit there and, uh, observe a lot of presentations and also making my own presentations in paper. But this is first of a challenge which has, uh, come to me. So, based on my own research in the field for some time now, I hope to offer certain points and, uh, for which we can think about and deliver it. Uh, if you look at the past five years, in fact, the last such exercise which we held was encode code in the sixth edition of the conference. So I think it is better, that was in two thousand thirteen. So it's ideal that we look at the last five years in the field on how, uh, things have, uh, moved forward or how, uh, the field has expanded or grown or, or remain, uh, remained at one place. Uh, if you look at the last five years, I think there is an interest and fascination. I think the fascination is the word which will, uh, have to be used with regard to China Studies in India. And for betterment of, uh, to explain it better, I think we need to divide it between academics and policy because that is how China, uh, China is being looked at in, in this country. There's been a lot of writing, especially in this, uh, section which I'm looking into, in politics and economy, trade, investment. And especially, uh, economy, trade and investment has a lot of comparatives with regard to India. Uh, there has been a significant focus of most of these writings, uh, is on, uh, the Communist Party. And the fascination with the Communist Party is also in alignment with the emergence of Xi Jinping. So right from two thousand twelve to now, a lot of these writings focus on Xi, the rise of Xi, the power, uh, of Xi and there is a focus which is largely centered around the, uh, General Secretary of the Communist Party. Uh, in fact, a lot of writings which in the data which was shared with us by Prasmitra, if you, if I had a chance to look at it, a lot of attention is and writing has been around on major events of the Communist Party or the Chinese state. So, uh, party congresses, NPC sessions, a lot of writings are focused on that. And again, a lot of them are exclusively focused on Xi Jinping. Uh, there has also been commentaries on, uh, PLA, uh, economy but also with in comparison or with implications. I think the implications for India is a word which is a running theme through a lot of these writings. And, uh, but however, I think, before I go into the field of research, I think the flip side which I found with a lot of these writings is the fact that, uh, first of all, there remain a lot of topical, uh, and there is a lack of depth. I was made to understand during my, uh, research years by my teachers that rather than going wide, what you need or your, uh, plus point will be going deep. And in-depth, uh, research is something which I don't find in many of these writings which, uh, have, uh, which have happened in the last five years on, uh, on, on, on China. And, uh, there is even within, if you look at CPC which I, uh, flagged out, is that the focus and the long-term dedication to look at the, the party, the dynamics within the party, the intricacies within the party, not just at the top level, even across China and various, uh, various of these provinces. I think that is something which we are missing and that's an essential component in going forward when you are researching on China or focusing on China or, or watching China. I think that is something which has to be there in the Indian national. If you move towards how research has moved in China, uh, on, on China and India, in the last five years, there has been a gradual increase, especially with regard to establishment of China centers outside Delhi. And also there has been a lot of work which has happened in, uh, non-China dedicated institutions on China, especially on issues of state-sozial relations, Chinese reforms which have continued to remain a peg for, uh, research on issues of human development. And there's a lot of comparatives which we are seeing on, uh, with regard to India. Uh, there has been, as I said, a lot of, uh, research on, uh, issues, uh, or outside established China centers. Uh, some of those issues on comparative basis could be health, uh, some labor with some, something which I focus upon gender. But still, these, uh, issues are not the glamorous issues as far as research is concerned. Uh, over the course of last few years, uh, to go back to what Avinash was finding out, there has been some interesting research as well. Uh, especially comparatives on poverty alleviation and development in, uh, the border regions, especially with regard to northeast India and, uh, northwest China, uh, issue of states like Manipur and Yunnan. There have been interesting comparatives which scholars and researchers have looked at. Uh, affirmative actions and reservations is an interesting topic which a lot of students have taken up. And there have been, uh, PhD, uh, dissertations also which have come out. There's been interesting comparatives between Mao and Ambedkar. So, see, these are some of the things which have come out in the last five years. There is also a lot of, uh, focus, uh, there is an interest, growing interest in ethnographic studies in the border regions, especially people living in the border areas. Uh, the ways of life, uh, cross-country river management is something especially on the Brahmaputra. There has been a lot of studies which, uh, scholars have been doing. Uh, some of this which has also been helped, uh, in the last five years, if I, I could notice, is the use of social media. Uh, but as with everything, the social media also has two sides. So while there is an expansion of research, there is a, especially a media like Twitter can be used for networking with scholars who are not, who are focused on China but in the West and to connect with them. But the flip side of that is also information overload. You get a lot of information and you don't know exactly how to filter them down and how to use them effectively. Studying going forward, uh, to do China Studies in India, I think is also, you have to also take cognizance of the fact and these China Studies also has to be situated in the Indian domestic, uh, political and social context. Uh, both India and China are equally diverse and complex societies. So to study, uh, complex and diverse China from com- equally complex and diverse India is going to be a challenge. And I think the first step towards that is to move from this fascination with regard to China, especially when you are teaching, uh, undergraduate courses or postgraduate courses on China and India. I think the move has to be from fascination to reason, rigor, quality and insightful research. And something which I, uh, have always been interested in or always look forward to is how do academics, uh, or high academics, how does it, uh, reflect or it resonate among with the man, uh, the common man? So, the same with other academics, I think China Studies also have to be interested, to have to be trusting and also has to resonate among the common people of the country as well, uh, China field. So, and, and sometimes we don't even know on what research is and which collaborate, which institution is collaborating with which institution or which, uh, department or which, uh, research in institution on social sciences is collaborating with which institution in China or which, which field. But there is a lot of things which are happening. So, all these researchers, these collaborative projects which are happening in different silos need to have, uh, coordinating rope to tie around. I think, I think that is one of the facts which also is a mission for, uh, the Institute of Chinese Studies as well. Uh, among other things, the challenges of course, it goes without saying, what you require is resources, uh, and that is pure financial in terms of scholarships, in terms of fieldwork grants, in terms of postdoc opportunities, in terms of internship. Those things have to filter in. How you are going to do it, I think we'll all have to take it, uh, case by case. The second thing which we have noticed, uh, is something which the Institute of Chinese Studies from its experience has tried to rectify. Uh, that is how to get students who are just passing out of their PhDs or who are completing the research, how to publish research articles. And on that basis, the Institute of Chinese Studies for example has done, uh, workshop where how research can be published. There was a training workshop this summer. So those platforms to publish research and also how to write a proper research article, uh, especially on China and East Asia, that also needs, uh, we need more of those training programs. And one thing which Avinash was saying, whether we require a Chinese study specific methodology, I think we require a solid process on research methodology. I think that is something is extremely lacking in a lot of these, a lot of the university systems in this country. What is a variable? What kind of research are you going to do? Is it qualitative? Is it quantitative? Like when I started doing my research, I did have, I would, these, these terms looked completely Greek and Latin to me. So, if, and a lot of meaningful research which is happening, which we can read is also based on, uh, these research methods. So, a proper training and a proper, uh, skill sets on these research methods needs to be, uh, there, uh, as, as opposite to what research methods as a black hole right now. Uh, at the end of the day, but I will, I think I'll, uh, end by saying this, that of course with all other challenges, I think the key at the end of the day, which I believe is the role of the teachers. Especially because I'm looking at, uh, issues of politics, economy and in this country on China. Uh, the student-teacher interface remains the key in this complex Indian system. And it is for the teachers who have to constantly push the students to get out of their comfort zones and take up unglamorous topics for research. And while the students are also need to be encouraged to take up these topics. It's, I think that ultimately it will be the teachers who have to be playing the role of chiseling and, uh, shaping students' lives. As Victor Hugo says that in, there is in every village a torch, and that torch is the teacher. So, a lot of attention and a lot of dedication from the teachers will also be required to ensure that the research on China is also gets into fields which are the non-traditional fields and in, uh, into proper. So I think with that, I think I'd like to end my notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Anand. Uh, you rightly pointed out that, uh, most of the subjects for research uh, are, you know, too topical and lack depth and there are many gaps which need to be filled. And especially those who wish to do, you know, in Sino-Indian studies like, for them to study two complex and diverse societies like India and China is a big challenge. And similarly, uh, you know, you pointed out the importance of, uh, language for the study of countries like China. And, uh, the key role that teachers need to play. Thank you very much for a very competent presentation. Now, uh, I'll request Professor Alka Ajariya to speak on behalf of Professor Shabri Mitra, who as I said, would come because of her illness. And Professor Ajariya, who herself is not very, uh, you know, fit, you know, she's also having some, uh, you know, health problems, has kindly agreed to speak on behalf of Professor Shabri.
So, good morning, everybody. And for those who were expecting Professor Mitra, I'm sorry. Uh, because she, she truly has works to study China in spite of the fact that India and China have a shared civilizational interaction for centuries. In the first few decades since independence, India scholarship on China has been limited to a handful of experts in few institutions who constantly faced scarcity of resources. Yet progress made in the last few decades has been extremely encouraging. With two new generations of China scholars, uh, coming to maturity, and I think both are represented here, uh, producing works on a wide range of themes. Uh, many of these scholars have achieved commendable competence in Chinese language, enabling them to use primary source materials that are much more readily available compared to few decades back. Subsequently, some of the existing areas of research have been strengthened, but more importantly, new areas of interest and importance have been identified and ventured into. Therefore, the body of research emerging out of our centers and institutes on China Studies in India have two points of departure compared to the past. First, uh, it has become a more and more interdisciplinary. And secondly, it has begun to take ample advantage of the abundant primary source material and language competence available today. Uh, the first section, uh, of this new phase of research, uh, has been described, uh, in the MPhil and PhD, uh, research on society and culture specifically. Uh, for this section, data has been taken primarily from the Jawaharlal Nehru University Research, Delhi University, Vishu Bharati and Banarasundu University, which were the primary centers where teaching and research on society and culture have been undertaken for very many decades and therefore reflect the gradual evolution, uh, of this research as well. Study of society and culture, uh, of China within the larger ambit of China Studies have been closely associated with humanities. Where study of Chinese language, literature, culture, society, religion and philosophy has been undertaken primarily by scholars trained in Chinese language and literature, often without specialized training in any of the social science disciplines such as history, political science, sociology, philosophy, et cetera. I think, uh, this is what Avinash was really pointing at in his, uh, rather, I would thought, strong uh, position on, uh, China scholars writing on just about everything from A to Z without the necessary competence, but partly emerging from this, this particular divide. Uh, this has been the case with several scholars of the generation graduating in the late eighties and early nineties, nineteen nineties. While many of them have learnt on their feet, strengthening themselves intellectually through sustained mentoring that helped them to face the challenges of humanities and social sciences interface better, others have not been so lucky or determined. In the next generation, graduating in the new millennium, there have been more scholars who have been increasingly in touch with the rapidly changing contours of Chinese society and culture. These scholars have actually found their research interests beyond the conventional themes, opting for study of Chinese youths, youth activism, women's empowerment, role of media, popular culture, class, gender, political discourse and rhetoric, uh, from a linguistic and language perspective, uh, but broadly falling in humanities and social sciences. What is more, with a high level of language competence, these scholars have accessed an amazing range of primary source materials, thus lending authenticity to their research. Uh, certain works have been identified. She has particularly singled out five, uh, research, uh, themes which reflect this diversity. So, um, should I go through them all? I'll just quickly give you a sense of the, the topics. Uh, the role of political rhetoric in shaping Chinese mindset. Um, economic structural reform and its impact on women and marriage in post-Mao China. Uh, political phrases under President Xi Jinping's leadership and China policy towards India. Uh, the paradox of equality and difference, gender discrimination at the workplace in urban China. Changing values of Chinese youths in the nineteen nineties. Political participation and culture of youths in post-Mao China. So, a lot of focus is being, um, given to the studying of youths and clearly this will have a very useful, uh, contribution to make in understanding how China is evolving. And, um, then there are of course Sino-Indian bilateral trade and, there's also a study of the relationship between state and society by, uh, looking at the work, uh, looking at the life and work of Liu Xiaobo. So, on the other hand, a substantial number of scholars graduating with Chinese language, literature, culture sources, uh, courses subsequently enrolling in departments and institutions with Chinese politics, economy, foreign policy and IR have chosen research themes such as, um, environmental diplomacy, cybersecurity, economic policy and development, uh, scale and pace of transition in rural China. The section would be incomplete if one did not mention works, uh, by scholars who have been trained in social sciences and IR and have gone on to choose research themes that would have a strong appeal to much wider Indian population. For instance, uh, uh, one of our ICS faculty, Nirbola Sharma's PhD thesis on the Indian National Army and Indian Independence League in China, uh, in the, during the period forty-two to nineteen forty-five. Uh, or that one of the papers that will be presented in this conference by, um, a master's student, Shruti Chinese Science Fiction, which was already mentioned earlier, and its socio-political engagements. The next section is individual scholarship on society and culture. And Professor Mitra says it would not be incorrect to say that individual scholarship in the universities mirror the trainings that have been witnessed, uh, which was, which I have just accounted in earlier section. In fact, it is perhaps better to look at it from the other end. That is to say, research interests of individual scholars have been reflected in the MPhil and PhD research they have supervised. Having said that, it is clear that the publication, it is clear from the publication and presentation history of individual scholars that they have each created a unique niche of their own, not replicated by other scholars.
So then there are details, so should I go into those details? How much time do I have?
Three minutes. So I don't think there is time to mention, but she has identified. Three minutes. So I don't think there is time to mention, but she has identified some twenty papers uh which, so I'm just going to quickly run through the themes. Uh the India-China civilization dialogue from shared cultural affinity towards a joint strategic rise. Contextualizing Lushun and CPC discourse on culture. Uh development of China studies in India, an overview which has been a consistent uh theme with, with the ICS to monitor the evolution, development, growth and promotion of China studies. Uh geo-civilizational framework, uh geo-civilizational as a framework for regional integration. Heritage tourism in the BCI region. Um narratives of nationalism, Tagore, with, starting from Tagore. Chinese strategy of regional interaction, India-China post-war cultural, cultural engagement and diplomacy. Tradition and or modernity juxtaposing women characters of Tagore and Lushun. And so on. And then there are a whole series of works which are historical, cultural merchants and morgues spread and development of Buddhism in China via the Silk Road. Kashmir has reflected in the accounts of Shuen Sang and Okong. Uh Kashmir in early Chinese records, Buddhism and Chinese studies in India. Then a history of Chinese literature, restructuring. So there are in fact a whole lot of topics that have been identified in these various themes. Which reflect a very interesting, very welcome, and I, I must say, very necessary diversity in the study of China, particularly from a historical and socio-cultural perspective. Uh while much discussion is taking place all over the world on the trajectory of China's development and important aspect of the research on China studies today is that more and more archival material is becoming accessible. Um scholars here, Professor Kamal Shil, Professor Thampi, um these will be speaking to you later. So let me leave the elaboration on this to them. Uh the data shows that number of publications in Chinese studies in general has steadily increased in the last few decades and society and culture have been no exception. However, percentage in the total number of publications on China studies is still rather low. Uh while society and culture of China hold greater interest in the lay public of India, publishing opportunities are still very low as academic journals, research platforms interested in publishing, China are limited to a very few and select journals. Um so this is the point Anand was talking about, that how much of high academia, as he tried, as he put it, would actually relate to the general public. And I think the point that is coming out very interestingly here is that there is a resonance that work on Chinese culture and history and literature and philosophy actually finds a lot of echoes uh in many of the, our own narratives, our own legends, our own historical stories. And so I don't see that this would not find an echo among the general public. In fact, I think this would be the kind of platform or the foundations on which we can build a much more different understanding of China and move away from the traditional, very, very limiting and limited perspectives of China that, that are that are floating in the, in the public domain today. Yes, I'm going to conclude now. So some highlights of her paper within she's making conclusions is that a gradual consolidation of humanities, social science, international relations interface would actually characterize the research on society and culture. And for a more complete understanding of China, more comprehensive and deeper engagement between these different uh so in other words, a conversation between all these different aspects is needed and must be encouraged through systematic training, mentoring and joint academic programs. It is clear that from the profile and the present, uh the topics, that certain areas such as religion and philosophy are receiving very little attention to the extent that it has already created a very large gap in Indian scholarship on history of Chinese Buddhism and Chinese philosophy.